To the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, unafraid, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have any public comments?
Uh, Jacob Ward. They are not for public comment, yes.
They are.
One is for public comment, the two that you're not, so you have one here for public comment.
Uh, hi, I'm Jacob Ward, I'm representing our union Pike Street Library Workers United. Um, I have a simple, easy demand today. Um, first off, thank you for all the work you do, as always, it helps keep all the libraries functioning. Um, but uh, many of our workers have been cut out of the telecommuting option at work, which has caused a lot of unnecessary strain on our workers. Um, I've seen board members and other people from our libraries, oh man, alright, it's all good, telecommute in here for things such as this, and yet many of us at the lowest pay grades don't have the option to do that, including on days where we aren't normally scheduled but have meetings to go to. So, this causes unnecessary strain on a lot of our workers. Um, some workers even have health issues that would keep them at home but capable of doing mobile work. And um, beyond that with our budget restraints, it should be pointed out that the current policy on telecommuting actually costs the district money in terms of mileage reimbursed. And so it's own, as far as I can tell, advantageous in every single way for a tiered telecommuting policy that enables people at different pay grades, different ways to telecommute into work, and what those would be. Uh, that's all I've got today, again, thank you, um, yeah, appreciate it.
Thank you, Jacob. Anyone else?
No more.
No more, okay, so will we start with reports of friends of the Pike Street Libraries? Well, since then, it's not our home here. Uh, so in the report, uh, the biggest things were the literary awards, which was a wonderful success. Tiana did a great job of sort of, you know, cleaning out what the library has accomplished, what it is doing and everything, so thank you. Um, we had a hundred and sixty tickets folks attend, and we actually even made a little bit of money on it, which is good. So, at the bottom, it, I think I had a little bit that a friend's volunteer donated tickets to um, the antique roadshow. So if you didn't click on the link, I sort of, isn't that amazing? So this is a medieval book, and we have it on auction on eBay for eight hundred dollars. Uh, so you know, sometimes we don't know, especially something that's published in fifteen sixty-six, we wouldn't have known, we just knew it was like, this is a real old medieval book. So it's sometimes, I've said that before, that sometimes people donate things, maybe not, they don't check, they, and sometimes I think it's, you know, um, children, relatives who are clearing out an estate, parents of state, and so they don't, they just, you know, donate everything. So, this was just on the cart, so we once had a friend who used to be on the friends board, but I wanted to point out, so, our, you know, the last meeting, remember Robert's rule, or Anne, you asked that we all get new ones. So this is Robert's rules of order seventy-fifth anniversary edition, was on the cart here, so some patrons thought that we could get some money for this. So what year do you think this was published? So look, very nice, the cover is, so what year do you think the seventy-fifth anniversary edition was? Okay, this really, if we had shown up with this for the meeting, nineteen forty-three. Ooh, that's obvious. God, thoughts that Robert's rules of order never changed, you know, they're like, hard core. But Scott wants to buy that.
It's a little less than the eight hundred dollars, so yeah.
Interesting thing sometimes, so I might give this to Beth and see, maybe we can get some money for it, you know, somebody. So nineteen forty-three. Wow, so thank you. Thank you. The foundation report. Okay, I can put in Betty Redd, uh, let me send the report. And Randy, you walked just in, walked in just in time, okay, our financial report.
All right, these are board members, sorry about the inconvenience. Um, so as you can see, these are the financial results for May thirty-first. Um, our property taxes, I'm just gonna go right to that, or, or ahead of budget at this point, but um, it's just at the timing, uh, we just always generally recommend writing about the, you know, our bill levy, etc. Our net impact on the fund balance is over five million dollars, yeah, I think some of that on our expenses is timing. Um, but, that one. To uh, public services and also support services credit, we really are, I mean, we've had two years of practice now, we're in our third year of really watching what we're spending and where it's going, and if, if we don't really have to do it, or we don't have an emergency, then, then we're not spending it. Your fund always looks very similar to the total, because um, obviously the only two things that are in here is capital fund and insurance fund. So that one went sitting at four point three, I mean, positive net impact over fund balance. And then try to take, finance office, we've got a, we do have a, a negative there, um. When I dug deeper into that, it's, it's a tiny difference for our, our fees. Um, I, I think we had to absorb some fees on the allotting, um, capital to, or the property taxes to the capital fund, because we didn't really have a place to put those fees on the capital fund, so I ended up absorbing a bit too, finance, so that's part of that. Then the interdepartmental, um, that's probably always gonna run uh, a red number, because it includes our um, vacancy number, or uh, vacant number of people that are out, you know, that will fill a position at the beginning of the year, as if the people are there the whole year, of course, that's never gonna happen. And we don't really see the end result of that until December, when all of the final numbers get into payroll. So that's always gonna run a little red. Um, expenses, expenditures, um, mostly everybody's running black, there are a few that are running red, I already talked about finance and the, human departmental attrition savings is the word I was trying to come up with. Um, but if you've looked at those at all, it's, those are really the only two that are, are running black, we've got a small one for you, but that's based, because they don't have a budget. And uh, regional history and genealogy, um, my guess is that it's probably has to do with some software storage thing that we put in place, we've got, I think some consulting on that, that, um, eventually we'll realign some budget to cover that. Capital fund, um, the dollars for the, for East, which would be in facilities, hasn't really started coming through yet. We actually just, I think, got the work position, ready to approve on that from you guys, um, approving that whole, um, project last month. And security. Dollars for Penrose, it doesn't appear like a dollar for Penrose has started closing out too, so I need, I'll do some checking on that, that is like. But our revenue is um, right where it should be on there. I hope that we're not needing to move some money over, but uh, I still don't know exactly where the Penrose, uh, security structure is gonna end up, so we may, I may down the road have to do some, we've been having a general fund that covers some of the things going on in that. And IT, um, probably has a, a few things that we didn't, um, think about having to cover at the beginning of the year, that we may have to put into that before the end of the year. And our self-insurance fund, um, glad to see that's actually, um, running black. The personnel expenses, most of that is our claims expense on the health insurance. And so year-to-date, for five, five months, we're only a thousand dollars red, so I was really happy to see that, and our revenue's running, um, higher than I originally budgeted. So my hope is that we're gonna end up with another positive on that, we've, um, been able to keep up with spending on that. And I really, people are really using, um, a lot of the lower cost options and some uh, insurance agent has told us that, you know, many of the categories they measure us on were, were ranked higher than the national average. And I don't have any more adjustments as of right now, probably will by the next one. That's it. Questions?
Anyone have any questions? Quick services, Tammy.
Okay, so any questions about the report before I highlight a few things? Alright, so a couple of things I wanted to point out. Rachel on history and genealogy hosted their first, um, Jewish genealogy class, and they weren't sure if they would be interested or not, but they had, it was pretty well attended with eleven, so, um, they'll likely host that again coming up. Um, one of the other things I wanted to point out is Sarah Holting judged Battle of the Books for the Tesla Education Opportunity Center. And with a big sigh of relief, Adult Education was awarded the EFL grant for the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-eight funding year. It was for the full amount that they asked for, which meant that their grant application was the top application in the Pike Street area, so we were very excited about that. Yes, thank you.
Uh, should we go back to the foundation report? Courtney, would you like to make a foundation report?
Yeah, I just wanna take, if you have any questions about the report and seeing if you, you know, uh, I met my friend this morning, uh, and we've been really excited to be here, and so.
Anyone have any questions on the foundation report? Thank you. Uh, support services, uh, communications, do we have any questions on any of those reports? So, facilities, human resources, OT, security, anything? Oh, Benny, Scott.
So. Uh, the majority of the questions that I have are Gary.
Oh, Gary.
Because.
We stand enough, we stand enough.
So all of the, the uh, closures that we got over the last week, two weeks, um, Library Twenty-One C, Roof Polly, Old Colorado City, um, can you give updates on this?
So I can, Twenty-One C, we experienced, uh, major water main break under the children's yard. We decided to ignore it. Uh, for a bit of a sudden, we had to shut down that day, just because we had to shut the water down. Uh, we're in the process of working with the engineer. We did, we did go ahead and, and tell them, so, uh, an accident isolation valve to allow us to still charge the building for domestic water and also the fire system as well. So now we're working with the engineers on building the plan to relocate that main land, because it's going under the children's yard, we had a very like this, uh, being years ago. And so we want to eliminate that in the future, so we're working, it has that, so. Roof Polly was this, a standard sewage backup, uh.
Doesn't know what standard about that, but.
That has a long history, it's, uh, when that, that center was originally constructed, there was a slope in, in the uh, the sewage line, in, about in the computer area. And so several years ago, we installed clean outs of locations, and that's where it seems to always be blocking. So, uh, excavating several feet, many feet, plenty of feet of, of the flooring and everything, they've done replaced it, I mean, it's costly at this point. Uh, Old Colorado City, we had, uh, uh, one of the committees are using the air conditioner available, so we couldn't keep them, we've got both. We got to re-replace two of those, uh, we had mine there, so it's not any service.
Okay, uh, and then the last question, um, is about that parking lot for East. Um, I think in your report it said they were having to add an additional phase to the.
It was just because of the requirement with the city that we exposed more than an acre at a time.
Okay, so that was what you discussed last time.
S- sad, sort of a sad.
Okay, and that's not adding any additional cost to what we moved last time, okay, great, okay, that's it.
Anyone else? Any other questions on any of the other reports? Okay, Taiona.
Okay, so, um, first of all, I would like to take this opportunity and thank Gary Sailing for the service to PPLD and this community for eighteen years. And as you know that, uh, this week, or next week, we will be retiring, and, um, I made this mistake, we went out and had lunch, so obviously I'm an English student, right? So I said, so now you're going to go to your retirement home, what I meant. So what we said, not, what I meant was that he did buy a house in the mountains to build it. So he was very gracious, like even joked about it, not yet. So, so, but again, um, thank you, Gary, and also one of the accomplishments, that she, he made sure that would happen, that was facilities master plan. Thank you very much for guiding us and taking us through the process, um, and you were very, I appreciate it, and we will miss your job. Yeah, so, ah. Okay, so I, I thought you were making, saying something or joking online, you know?
I was curious if it resulted Scott's questions and made you wanna retire now.
I was just gonna say, party of yours.
So, yeah. But yeah, so, um, we actually had our first administration team meeting, I believe it was last week. Um, we started discussing budget for twenty twenty-five. I, I know that it's early, but we, as we start discussions this early and looking at every aspect of the library, since we do not know, uh, what's going to happen in November during elections as well, uh, regarding that ballot measure, that possibly might impact, um, our funding as well. But, uh, Randy Green, uh, did a great presentation, and he also did talk about uh, our responsibility to the community, and as a governing body, and his role and my role as well, and we always need to remember, um, that, um, we're accountable to the community. And also I want to thank, um, Timothy Allen, um, he did a great job, the training about our process at PPLD when it comes to disciplinary action, so. And I should say that I never thought I would enjoy an HR training. He did a wonderful job, and we were even laughing, and he just, I don't know, I think, gave me this power to fly around on his slide, so, just saying it. So, but yeah, so, um, it was, it was very good to have that meeting and to start thinking, uh, about the future. So, uh, again, I want to also to take this opportunity and thank the programming team. Always comes to summer adventure, they, they are busy, and they're doing a great job, and of course the communications team as well. Um, I got this compliment of the Penrose Library from one of the staff members, that she told me, now we hear about PPLD everywhere, even when I watch Hulu, and I had no idea that we even were there. So thank you to me senior team. So, um, that's, that's what's going on, and, uh, and my last update is I had a meeting with Jamie Fava, the chief of staff, the mayor's office. We discussed the safety and security, um, challenges the city faces, uh, and it's not the Pike Street Library District. Uh, but also I thanked her for ensuring that chief of police, Clara Springs, uh, they did help us. They came out and did that, um, report, uh, about the Penrose complex, and I believe I shared that report with, with, uh, all of you, so, thank you, and do you have any questions for me?
Thanks, Tammy, thank you, Jane. Uh, board reports, government's groups.
Okay, so we did meet, and we discussed planning for the board retreat in late September. Um, and then we also, uh, were working on board compet, the board competency survey in preparation for just, uh, the process for a new board member, so, uh, that should be in all your inboxes today. So if you can get that filled out as soon as possible, it's in a digital version, which Jeremiah very kindly put together to make it easier for us. So, um, it should be a pretty quick, uh, process, rather than trying to fill it out on paper and scan it and get it back and all that sort of thing. So, um, I think the deadline we put on it is next Wednesday, but if you can get it done sooner, that'd be much appreciated, so we can get that data pulled and things moving.
Okay, and the other two committees did not meet. Uh, they will be meeting hopefully next time. Uh, do any of our liaisons have any questions or, uh, comments they'd like to make? Nancy, I see up there.
Thank you, I'm sorry, it's been quite a while since I've attended a meeting, so, can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Yeah, there we go.
Great, sorry, yes, I apologize, it's been a while since I've attended a meeting, but, um, I do not have a report or comments, I'm, um, I, I will, actually, I will say you have a presentation in a little while on your agenda, that came to, um, the Public Art Commission yesterday regarding a mural, um, for the library, and thank you for hearing that, uh, presentation. Um, it was very interesting, and I actually met the family, uh, at, uh, Mitchell High School a few weeks ago, and, um, and, and I'm excited to, to hear how you all receive, uh, receive them, and I'm happy to join in that conversation if it's helpful, um, when you get to that. But otherwise, no, I don't have anything, and thank you for the work you do on behalf of our library district.
Thank you, Nancy, for sitting in and listening. Uh, I don't believe there's any other liaisons, so we'll go to trustee comments, any of you have any comments you'd like to make? Anything going on exciting?
Well, I went to the, um, awards luncheon for the friends, and it was wonderful, as we just go. It was great, it, it was really nice, I've, I've attended several of ours over the years, and I thought this is definitely one of the best, so, thank you, who does?
Uh, I was, also attended the, uh, literacy awards luncheon, it's always really good. At first time I walked, didn't walk out with books. Uh, and, uh, I'm also participating with La Kina Voices, and they're planning, we're getting very excited about what's gonna happen next with that, so, uh, that's very exciting, so we should be, we'll see what happens next. And I apologize, I don't know the library manager's name at this library, but.
Jean already.
Jean, okay, Jean, I'd like to thank you for opening your doors for us today. I know it's a little crowded, but thank you very much, it's kinda cozy in here. Um, okay, we'll move on to presentations.
If I may, uh, sorry, as we say in council, have an alibi, there's one thing I forgot to mention. Um, I used the Makerspace in the East Library and a sewing machine, and had no idea that that existed in our library district. I have not sewn since I was, I think in middle school, and I had to do some sewing and, and repairing of something, and it kind of came back like riding a bike, um, but it was so terrific. So I just wanted to say I learned that about our library and was very happy, and thank you for having that.
Thank you, yes, there's lots of fun things at the library, we just need to go explore. Uh, we have some, uh, uh, new staff and staff promotions, so, Dust, Becca, this is who we're looking for.
Okay, I have a couple of people online, Dustin, who's there, would you mind? So, again, certainly, so Dustin is our studio services coordinator. He's been with the library district for almost four to five years, and he's gonna be overseeing studio services for the district, helping with policy, working on a studio training program, the studios and the Makerspaces are two things that require a lot of training, a little bit extra, library training is a lot, this is a little bit extra. And so he's taking on that daunting task, and he's brought with him a tremendous history as a musician, and has worked on both sides of the recording booth, so he's brought a lot of fantastic knowledge to that news position, and we appreciate him very much. And then my next two people that I'm gonna introduce are the data analysts that were hired earlier this year. Sarah Holland has been with the library for almost eight years. She has a background in psychology and brought a lot of statistical knowledge and work from that. And then she's worked in the Makerspaces for a long time, so she's got a lot of great technology knowledge as well. And then Becca Phillipsen, because we like to have the same names. She's been with the library district since we opened Twenty-One C in twenty fourteen, and through her job as a young adult-focused librarian, actually got to work on a lot of data projects, and caught the data bug, and so came over and joined us, um, for data analysis. And so both Sarah and Becca are working on learning about all of the data that we collect as a district, and Power BI, a really powerful business analytical tool, and SQL servers and databases for fun with. Okay. Thanks for letting us introduce them.
Wow, all those numbers. Uh, Janina?
So, whatever, Jennifer Luber, she is already a branch manager free at Library Twenty-One C. And, um, I have her bio on my phone, which I love to bring her. So what I will tell you is, she worked near Monument, and she worked at Twenty-One C, and so now it's like coming full circle, and she's managing Twenty-One C and meeting well at Monument, so. But she's at Twenty-One C now, so you're around, you may see her, and that's what we have.
Awesome, thank you. Okay, next, something we've all been waiting for, the facilities master plan report.
We'll be able to.
Awesome, well, we appreciate y'all having us here, we're excited to just talk through the process we've been through. I think we're coming up on a year since we started this process. Okay, so yeah, um about a year of engagement with y'all and all the data, you guys, data analysts, analysts are gonna look. All the data and interaction with the community and we'll talk through a little bit of that, a little bit of that, I think you all. Have seen the the draft report kind of in the in progress report that we're working on. And we're moving towards um finalizing that over the next four months, but I'm happy to talk through a little bit of it. So, uh just kind of a summary of what we of what we did, what, this is kind of summary of what what we've got on our slides, so we're gonna talk through. Um some of what we what we discussed with the community, um well, first of all, Mary Burris with HBDA. Um now RSMH in town here, local and.
Rock Holland on the managing principal and co-founder of Revenant, so we're actually.
And we've got Clara here too from the maintenance. Um, so yeah, we'll talk through a little bit of what what the discussions that we have with the community, all the different outreach engagement that we did. Um for that, uh lots of lots of good interaction there. Um talk a little bit about some of the analysis that we did, so data um benchmarking against other library districts. Um some analysis of fuziness in your in your range, it's based on um the statistics that you keep. And then some mapping, geospatial analysis to think about where users are, where the populations are and drive time and analysis, all sorts of fun stuff. Um and then we also did facility assessments as part of this, so um helping Gary's team wrap their arms around what the. Condition issues are with all the facilities, um and then we tried to bring it all together, we had a workshop with uh leadership groups. Um to to fit through like, alright, now we know all the existing conditions, where do we go with it? Um and we compiled those into a report that that details some of our findings and. What we found, what what we, what our instincts tell us, some of some things that we feel like we could recommend for the for the facilities portfolio of the district. Um so yeah, just kind of some framing of of what what we have in the reports, I want to emphasize that we. Our our recommendations, we ended up splitting into three kind of scenarios, like what if what if you are kind of continuing on the same level of funding that you are? Um what what does that mean for the future of your portfolio um of of modest increase or you'll see this in benchmarking. Um but you're below the Colorado average right now um for funding. And so what if we kind of brought halfway to the average, basically? Um and then another higher level of what if you were able to increase funding to to that Colorado average? And what that the different implications that might mean for for a sustainable facility portfolio. I want to emphasize that what we've got in here are not decisions, they're recommendations, we're we're the outsiders coming in and trying to trying to come up with some. Some ideas, so uh um nothing that we said in here is definitely going to happen.
Alright, so just wanted to hit some of the highlights of this information you're gonna find uh in that uh. Seventy plus page report, not including the all the appendices and uh raw data and things, so. Uh first and foremost, I we had, I would say, pretty robust communication of this, right? Nearly four thousand people participated in some form of of this process, um so kudos to the marketing team. Kudos to particularly the community outreach team who uh these intercept events again, I think the most we've ever had a client do, maybe. Career or, they did more than one. Um and had over a thousand people just participating in that, those most vast majority of those people were probably non-library users. So, that was our key way to really engage the the more of the, you know, the the less frequent users of the library across the community. And then we're taking a few of those underserved areas, uh we feel like we had really robust. You know, we were on site of the of the locations, a a number of times, we we went to every site at least once. Um and actually twice, because uh with two teams, right, the conditions assessment team. And then the more library kind of facility usability of those teams, every site got visited at least twice, several even sort of three or four times. Um, some of the big high level things that we heard across all of that input. Uh the community really values and appreciates the the library, the staff. Um thi- this is an important, you know, identity in this community, that the library is an important piece. Uh and they value the the library's role in the culture and the and the, you know, the learning and and environmental kind of ecosystem of of the community. Um but seeing challenges, particularly in some of your high growth areas, the library's not keeping up. With what's happening, the changes in the growth in the in the community. Uh so how does, you know, how does that, and particularly some of those higher growth need areas, or some of your more socioeconomic challenged areas, too. So kind of an alignment of higher growth and higher needs in in some cases. Uh, you know, I think accessibility um and and kind of capabilities. This meeting or maybe your big qualification or that, a little undersized for some of the purposes that you need to use it for. Um and I think in particular, there was a lot of concern at some of the remote locations. Uh you know, Palmer Lake, Utah, uh Pass and uh Cowman, you know, well, you know, we know we're small, we know we're not as utilized. What's gonna happen, so a lot of I think concerns there, uh that because of that low usability that they're that they might not get uh the attention. So, um. So like, you know, everyone got some of this and just to get into a little more detail, we did a ton of analysis, a ton of data crunching, utilization analysis, busyness analysis. Demographic, the the most mapping we've ever been a part of in any project like this. Uh we did a bunch of mapping, Aaron's team did a bunch of mapping, we maybe maxed every car folder in the Pike's Peak Library District to see where they were. Uh our power users and things like that, it's, you know, to see how those things, looking at socioeconomic factors. Uh we did a benchmark analysis to see where where PPLD is stacking up. Uh against uh particularly similar libraries in Colorado, we'll talk more about that in in a minute. Um but some of those things that that kind of jumped out in those kind of analysis in particular, the funding disparity uh that Aaron mentioned. Um, you know, and then the operating, and then how that boils down to your operational efficiency, so you're you're. Operating at a lower funding level, yet you're actually operating kind of at a higher outlet. Level, number of service outlets than that funding level, you're slightly below average, but that average includes libraries that are much better funded. Than you um on a per capita basis. Um and your total space system size, so you're underbuilt as well compared to that benchmark, you guys are about point five. Square feet per capita, national average is north of about point eight square feet per capita. Um and from one in in the benchmarks, the Colorado average was just right around that. Geographic imbalance, um if anyone's ever, if you look, one, this would be one of the most telling things, if you look at how. PPLD's branches are situated and you look at where your population densities are, just just look at that one raw metric. That's where you've got a lot of disparity, right, you've got a lot of growth and population density out this way, but your locations are heavily tilted. To the west. And that is going to continue to get worse, right, all of the growth is 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 here, there's really no growth coming this way, all of the growth is is this way. Uh because of the geography of your of your district. Uh generally, there's some specifics, and we're and we just picked a few to highlight here, obviously, we we don't have the trend this summer, twenty minutes, so I'm trying to think. Um, you know, Monument, Cheyenne, Mountain and Rock Rim, were some of your busiest locations, there are also all leased facilities, which are. Which is really, you guys have one of the highest, the highest rate of lease percentage of your outlets of any uh. Maybe I've worked with, anything that I can find, um which really starts eroding your some of your sustainability, because it's up up eroding your. Operational spending into. Um, High Prairie is your busiest location and dramatically undersized for that usage today. And also situated at the center of the highest growth areas of your district, so it's one of the more critical uh pieces. And, you know, I think as, you know, those concerns from some of those remote locations, I think, if you just look at numbers. It's realistically so, right, the operational spending that you're, you you have to have, just kind of keep the doors open in those places. Is not in a good ratio to the usage levels at that many, because they don't have the the same population, so, you know, we have some some thoughts around. Uh that as we get into some of the some of the key findings and things like that, so. Uh just starting to break down a little bit more further, uh some of the findings and things, one of the things that this facilities condition assessment. Um I think what it kind of came back is, you know, you're okay, you're not great. But you're okay, you're not in a horrible kind of situation, some of that's because somebody in your facilities are leased, you're not on a hook. For for some of those bigger kind of capital things that that might come along, but you do have some larger capital projects in the right, so. Um so, so that's, I think, kind of playing into things, uh the lighting space, we talked about that. Very few of your facilities could be extended where they sit today, so that's kind of the challenge is if you try to start addressing, even if you have the money. Trying to address some of that underbuildness, it's gonna be challenging, staff spaces are a huge deficit here. Not the worst we've ever seen in a single individual libraries, but I, the worst we've kind of seen at a system wide level. Um in our work, so, you know, a few locations have been pretty good system, staff spaces, but the vast majority. Of the locations are really undersized for to allow the staff to just do their jobs and have a, you know, a reasonable workplace and a place to know. Uh we talked about the lease spaces, the thing that's interesting about the lease spaces, although they rock rim, the lease spaces have some of the best parking availability. The Rock Rim is probably some of, and 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 Monument are are not so good tonight, it was a little hard to find parking space. Uh so you you've got some some things there. Stacking challenges, so we're we're still, we still haven't done the staff analysis, that was kind of a separate piece, we're doing that this summer. But what's clear in the reports of talking staff is stacking that, you know, across the district is very tight. Um particularly when you were, when you were, you had open positions, there was some closures even, right, due to the, due to not having enough staff as. People were sick or vacations and things like that, really, so you're you've been really kind of operated at margins of what you can support output wise with your staffing. Uh the capacity overall is is out of line, funding constraints are insufficient, I think one of the things is interesting, if we even looked at. Like, not just looking at your operational funding, but your operational plus capital, like, the margins were those bigger there, right? So, um that that funding difference is is um is even bigger in that way. Um we talked about the the kind of uh non-alignment, where where your population is, where your population is growing. The overbuildness on the on the west side versus the east side, and then in particular that that socioeconomic impact. One of the, another one we actually want to area deprivation, it's a composite. Kind of score of the variety of different things that impact socioeconomic, uh in people's lives, in the redder areas are more socially disadvantaged. So that was, you know, a lot of your places where you're overbuilt are also some of your higher economic areas versus your lower social not economic areas. So what does all that mean? Um, so, this is a lot of what kind of informed the recommendations that Aaron's gonna go through in a minute, so. Sustainability, you're really your future forward looking sustainability that gets highly challenged out, we. A a really detailed financial model is not part of our scope, it was a a piece we had on our team. So we're we're making some, we're making some assumptions, we're making some things, we're factoring a lot of things in. Um but we really feel like you're underfunded to be able to continue to operate at the level of outlets that you have today. And in particular, if you're 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 dramatically underfunded, if you're gonna try to address some of these gaps in your service, your service location. It's trying to get uh accessibility of services into some of these higher growth and uh uh more challenged parts of your community. So you've got some hard choices time, right, and it's guys are sitting in, you know, a hard place and some hard choices, I think, you know. You're gonna have to look at potentially some service reductions, branch closures, relocations. Uh again, you're gonna need some more financial modeling to really get to the to the heart of that. Um or look at how, you know, what can you go to the community and say, you know, can we get closer to that Colorado average? If we do that, then maybe we can do certain things and 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 keep more of what we have today uh on offer.
So I'm gonna talk through a little bit of those different recommendations that came out of it, and before before I get into that, just to set a little bit of the context, we we had. During the workshop that we had to start thinking about future ideas, we talked about principles, so I'm like, what what do you want us to plan around? Should we think about a whole different model of the library district, should we think about, how should we think about new locations, old locations, all that? And and some of the highlights of what we came out of that with was. Um that that we want to change some some elements of the posture of the of the district and to move the center of gravity. Eastward to follow population, try to be close to people, try to be probably close to people who have higher needs. We we want to generally uh shift the ownership structure to to owning more of your facilities rather than leasing. Um and and other than that, it was kind of a light, a light touch, like, we could look at some some differences in operational models, but. But we didn't want to rethink the whole model, you know, there's other models that have a giant pub library and a lot of tiny libraries, we've got. We've got like kind of a mid-range system here where there's a few, a few big ones and and a handful of smaller ones and a couple of things. Um and we didn't want to rethink that whole model, um so these are all kind of incremental steps for us, so option one level funding. The idea in the short term is to look at service hours in some of uh the smaller libraries, so. Old Colorado City, Manchester, and Cheyenne, that's an opportunity um to um. To expand hours to 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 serve those.
We'll include those more as a as a as a service unit, so looking at hours, so maybe less hours in each one, but more hours across the period.
Because there's some overlap in those territories, um. Looking at an unstaffed controlled access model for a couple of your, a couple of your um more locations and and. We don't have enough time to talk about that, but it's still talking a lot, it'll. But um kind of a model where you you are able to to check into a library without staff being there and trusted trusted um access model. Um but that's a potential way to 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 extend some hours in places where they they need that, so that's such a cost. Um we looked at potentially Rock Rim being a good target for um um. Ending that lease, because that's a leased facility, the lease is coming up soon, it's in an area where there's some overlap. Um so.
It's only most, it's most expensive lease.
And it's, and it's, yeah, it's a high cost. Um and then the other one is looking at Ruth Hall, that's that's the other one that was leased facility that could potentially. Um save some money, and then uh the. In the midterm, talking about material pickup lockers, so another way for people to come and visit um outside of hours and and. Thank you s- services, um we talked about opening a new powers core or location, so kind of pairs up with Ruth Hallie recommendations.
Sort of a ship on closure.
Yeah, I mean, you close one and you open another, but kind of shifting that to something that's a little bit further east as a population. Um High Plains feels like it's a natural for expansion, you own that building, you own the lot, there's room on the lot for additional facilities, so. That one, um it it being so busy, is that uh seem, that seems like a good choice there, and then Monument was another one to to. Get out of this lease where we're at right now and shift that a little bit further south than east potentially. Um as well to to uh, there's a little bit of an overlap here between um Palmer Lake and Monument branches and shifting down towards that edge.
And so, yeah, some growth in the that's further down, like, needs to be.
A lot of growth in that Black Forest area that we begin to everywhere, it's about going straight to that twenty-five, so you could put something in that area, it would be convenient for that. Uh area, and then renovations to east to just improve some of the usability, more about programming. Kind of um focus there and um and some other upgrades to the same. Uh those are a little bit longer, so that's the level funding model, where you you end up one branch. Down in that in that model to get a kind of.
Yeah, and then a little bit more self-service model at the at the at the remote locations.
So, this one was, uh I mean, trying to increase that operational funding to, you know, where fifty-one, say we go to sixty-four. Like, a little bit more, but not all the way up.
Not not quite that way, it's the have, the the average is seven quarters.
Yeah, so a lot of similar recommendations there, we've got the service hours, Old Colorado City, United, and Cheyenne. Um talking about that of staff controlled access at Cowman, uh Palmer Lake, uh U Pass. Um looking at a at in the short term, working towards that um funding increase. And the material pickup lockers um in the short term as well, so midterm on this would be to shift. That shift in Ruth Hallie over to a powers um location, expanding High Plains and Saint Creek upgrades. Really, the uh the the main difference is here, we've got this shift in Monument, which I talked about before, our lease renovation, but on this one, we talked about. Keeping a a location in that Rock Rim area, so shifting it to an off facility, uh east facility. Starting to look for those opportunities.
Yeah, that that might not be any bigger than it is today, but.
Yeah, like a little bit more ability to control, right? So in this model, you you keep the same number of branches. And then that that pull-up option of um funding increases to the to the Colorado average, a lot of the same same uh. Same recommendations, the main difference on this one is that, uh, we also bring shame into things, so shifting that out of a leased facility and it's a. Facility as well, once you've got that higher capital um flow to, to facility that. Is there any other change?
Uh, no, I think we just pull forward some of the, the, some of the other issues that happened.
Yeah.
Make sure, yeah.
And we talked, uh, we talked a little bit about some other, some other considerations, some next steps for you all beyond those recommendations. Um, and I think the next step, this is based on that benchmark of that raw number of dollars per, per capita. Um, but it probably makes sense to, to do that financial modeling of how much money do you free up by, by letting go of a certain lease? What does that do for your future and kind of model that out? Um.
Yeah, along with some tax for the modeling too, right?
Yeah, see what that generates over, over time. Um, the uh, the funding levels.
Yeah, just making sure it's on whether to stay.
Yeah, 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 decide which, which, which path you want to go down. Um, looking at how those funding choices influence the branches, um. And then, and then thinking through the, the, the timing of all of it. Uh, you know, one thing that we didn't, we didn't focus on, uh, meant to, meant to say earlier on, so we talked about moving these locations, potential closures. Um, that's not a, that's not a stacking decision, that's a facility's decision, you know, I, I think the model that we have, like, like Rob said. You, you, you're still understaffed, it's going to be spreading that, spreading that staff over. A fewer number of facilities that are more efficient, so, um, I, I want to make sure that people hear that.
Yeah, yeah, so, yeah, I would say we'll, we'll see what the gap is, almost certainly you're understaffed for your overall population. Uh, so, yeah, we're, we're not trying to reduce the staff, we're trying to figure out how you can. Better deploy the staff so that you can not be so thinly run in all your.
And in some cases, get a few more hours.
You know, availability with politicians, with that.
Um, so, we're working on that final report, um, we'll, we'll submit a, a kind of a pre-final version on Monday. Uh, and then we'll kind of reprocess and kind of submit the final version of that in July. Um, we also have a facility design guide as part of our scope, so we're, we're getting, we're working on that, we wanted to get through the body of this before we started working on that. But that should give the facilities group some guidelines to help hand to people when you're renovating or or building new facilities, how much you want to have. Um, that final facilities condition assessment, that's going to be a great tool for your facilities folks to, a lot of, a lot of data about every individual facility and system that they have. Um, and then that staffing analysis, it's the. So. I have a beer, I have thirty seconds.
That was the, that was the buzzer, so, yeah.
So, questions?
So, when you're doing all the community, uh, engaged pieces, did the ballot initiative come up in those conversations with them? Did you get any sense of appetite with that?
So there, there, there was, the, the times it came up, it was never a negative. It was never, this community is never going for this, it was just like, we need to be more, the, the messaging needs to be clearer, we need to understand what, you know, what are the implications better? Um, you know, I think in the survey, you know, there was certainly, in any survey you do these days, you get a few people just saying, you know. I mean, if anything, there's, it gives those voices of like, shouldn't be a library in this state, right, I mean. Um, but I think most, the by and large, I think it was, we need, we need more, and we know that that's not going to come for free.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I have some questions. Uh, but it's more along the lines of the report that was sent out, so I have no problem in providing those to somebody.
Yeah.
Whether it go through Gary or whomever to get to you guys.
Yep.
Um, but I know that it's still in a draft format, but there were some questions that I had about some of the information that was on.
And that was how we're taking this, kind of getting this information, we can make sure the file report addresses any and all questions, uh, particularly from the front door.
Okay.
And we want to make sure that you have that report that.
And I appreciate that.
Yeah, but I, I would also just like to say, reiterate, said it many times, I tried to buy a building in Manchester. I just tried my hardest, okay? It was just, it was just one hundred percent, yes.
They're pretty close.
It's, it's almost like you bought it though.
Almost.
Any, anyone else have any questions or concerns? So you'll, you'll send your questions to Gary and. And, 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 yeah.
I'll send this.
Yeah, we don't want, you'll, you'll send this.
Yeah, I'll just pick somebody.
Well, one thing I'll, one thing I'll say too on the ballot initiative is that if you guys do think, like, that you want to get start serious, it's just about having the conversation. Before you're making a decision, right? It's like, we need to have this, we need to make a decision, we want to get serious about that as an option. Bring in John Kraska from every library. Nobody in this country understands library ballot initiatives within an organization, the best part is, they're free. So.
Why it's free?
Yeah, so. So he, he's already up to speed a little bit, because I, every time, I mean, I talk to him, I don't know, five or six times a year, uh, or more. Uh, almost every time I talk to him, up here, names come up, you know, just say, it's like. When, when they're ready to start thinking about it, I don't talk to him, because I think he has some, he has some, I think, some good insight into. Some of the realities and, you know, what the hill looks like, and how you put together a plan if you decide to take up the hill, how do you put a plan together to, to do?
Thank you.
Thanks all for your work on this.
Yes, thank you guys.
I, I do have this email addressed, he emailed me just like.
Okay.
Contact information, so.
All right, thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, if any other questions come up, and you have questions, kind of, I heard it's.
And tomorrow they will be presenting that presentation also.
Um, are we going to have, is there some information on that slides that, really? I kind of like the slides a little bit better.
Yeah.
So could we put those on the.
Yes, definitely, the thing was that, uh, when we talked about, we didn't have to just to say, send a PowerPoint presentation without.
Right.
Like, other, so, yeah, yes.
Okay, thank you. Um, thank you very much, a lot to, like, just.
Yes.
We will now have a presentation by Captain Thomas about a mural, Dr. Thomas.
Yes, my name is Captain Gregory Thomas, I teach. I teach Navy Junior O T C at the Adoree High School. Back in two thousand fifteen, one of your employees approached me from Pike's Peak Library District, Mr. Bill Thompson's online right now. Was some information on a person by the name of Daniel T. Griffin. Daniel T. Griffin, um. Is mostly, I know, I don't get any expert of that in here, well, this gentleman grew up Colorado Springs. He graduated from what is now Palmer High School in nineteen twenty eight. Worked for the Colorado Springs Telegraph for six years before he joined the Navy. Became a Navy pilot, stationed at Conny, we've been at the Center Seven nineteen forty one. When he was on duty that morning, he flew P D Y aircraft, which is the aircraft this. When, when the attack occurred, Conny, we got that person. He swam out to the plane, they got the engine started, attempted to take off. And so the aircraft got shot down, he was burned, swimming to shore, he got strafed and killed. So he is considered, for sure, the first Colorado killed. From Pearl Harbor attack, and most likely, and it's kind of recognized with the Navy. He is the first cat American casualty of World War Two, and he's from Colorado Springs. This would never have been known without the efforts of Bill Thomas, one of your former employees, he's retired. He presented me with information, this information, I didn't really know what to do with it, I had it. But a mural came to mind, so I have placed a large mural in the hallway as a Dory High School, in the J R T C hallway. We are now attempting to make his legacy permanent by requesting to have. This would be the mural on the library downtown, he has been in contact, uh, Dave Griffin, who's online also, he's going to be talking here shortly. We felt it important to get the family involved this as well, not just, not just me. The artist who did this has done multiple murals downtown. Most of the murals downtown, you see that are large, can plonk to them. So, um, what we're requesting is that this mural be placed on the north side, which is a. It's not working. Just advance the one, please. This is the artist rendition of what it would look like on the building itself. We think that there would be a lot of synergy with Colorado Springs. The library district, which I'm going to let Mr. Dave, or uh, Dave Griffin talk about that in relation to. This Q R code here, which will be tied to the mural and tied to the library district as well. So, you can see the, the size and scope of what the mural would be on the building. This would have a lot of public visibility based upon the size and the location of it. Which would, I think tourists would also be able to look at this as well. And as you're driving by, Q code would be so big, you'd be able to take a picture of it and see, what is that thing? And you'd get his history, you'd get a video, which we're making right now, we have a website. That's currently with some information right now, but that's under construction, not right now, by Bill Thomas, which is him, one of your former employees, so. Pass off to him, because from nineteen forty, in nineteen forty seven, he was reinterred from Hawaii, from the beach. To Colorado Springs and everything except there. From nineteen forty seven to two thousand fifteen, there is no history of Daniel T. Griffin. So Bill Thomas really did a favor to Colorado Springs and to me and the nation, because. You can only be the first one time, and he's the first. So, and I think because he's from Colorado Springs, I think he needs to be recognized essentially forever in Colorado Springs. Because of his historical significance to the city as well, um. You can do one more slide, please. This is a military town, I, I just, you know, a few days ago, I saw on the news where Colorado is the sixth most patriotic state in the country. And I think a lot of that probably has to do with Colorado Springs based upon the military we have here. Large, uh, large retiree folks, and the bases that we have here. Now, there aren't a lot of Navy guys here, but. Hey, the Navy guys have come here like me, and we were, we stayed retired, so. Um, I think this would also provide private community, the city, and again, we're going to tie this, we want to tie this to the Pike's Peak Library District as well. When you click on the Q code, you'll see his history tied on. Um, Dave, are you able to hear and talk now?
Yeah, I can, can y'all hear me okay?
Yes.
Next slide, please. So, no, I think as we look at this project, one of the things as a family member I'm most interested in. Is the connection to the history so that my grandfather's story doesn't really get lost. Um, Nancy Henjum, councilperson, thank you so much for helping us to facilitate this discussion, and I would tell you that. Um, the Q R code is kind of the key to this mural, in my opinion, to connect kind of the, the younger generation, if you will, with this story. I also think it really parallels a lot of the strategic plan for P P L D in that the community connections. The communication around his story and awareness, and also that Q R code kind of really opens the library up to people on the outside that might not ever come inside the building. And they can realize what's in there that could benefit them, discussions and interest and. Like, we play with our, our cell phones or smartphones, kind of takes you down the rabbit hole, if you will, next slide. So the proposal is kind of using the mural to help share the story of my grandfather, but most people look at this and say, what's that, that, that ship about? Well, that's the USS Daniel T. Griffin that was named after him, and of course, the Purple Heart on the right, next slide, please. But this is how they'll find out, when they hit the Q R code, it's kind of like, let's learn more. And a lot of credit to Bill Thomas, as Greg's already mentioned, and you can see in the middle down below, there's the first to fall. Well, we know the younger generation likes a lot of video stuff, so we're embedding a video in there that's short and sweet about the story. But also let them see the historical resources that they can access through the Pike's Peak Library there on the right. And I, I think, you know, the archivists get a huge shout out for all this work they do. And then you've got the Colorado Springs on the left side that people can connect to as well, and we'll have some dropdown menus off of this, but I. I really see it as a way to kind of bridge this history, if you will, because if we don't do it, it's going to get lost. And, and, and I think that as more and more time goes on, it's easy for that to slide by. Next slide. So here's the budget timeframe, no cost to P P L D, all the fundraising's done by us, we have four donors already interested. Uh, we've set aside some maintenance fee ideas already, and, um. Uh, Kim Palumba, who's our fabulous muralist, has already thrown out a date of December seventh, twenty twenty four, for a dedication, because he set aside a time in his schedule. To say, let's get this rolling, I think he's one of the other people that's very excited about this project, so, next slide. So here we are, you got me, you got Bill Thomas is on the line, you got Kim on the line, and you got Greg, uh, looking pretty dapper there in person, I'd say, so, uh, away. And just for the record, we're at the eight minute mark.
Any questions?
Um, all of you were given a pamphlet there that details all of the history of Daniel T. Griffin. How long we looked through that interview?
How, uh, and I, I'm, I'm curious about this, um, about the paint that's used, and, and I think, I don't know if Kim is on there.
He is.
But I'm, I'm, does it fade? Will it fade over time because of the sun?
What is nice about this, this is a north facing side of the building, so the sun will never hit it directly, so the sun won't be a big impact on it.
Okay, but we're not worried about any type of fading because of weather or rain or anything like that?
Kim?
Uh, yes, I'm here.
Can you talk about the paint you use?
Uh, I certainly will, uh, Greg, yeah, look, um. There's, uh, some of the very early murals I did in two thousand four, their color is still as, as vibrant as the day I painted them. But, um, getting back, back to this proposal, it's north facing, which is most important. We are thinking of putting, uh, uh, protective U V coating on it. Um, none of my murals downtown have got any coating on it, but we, for this one, we might suggest doing that. The paint I'm using is, uh, some of the top stuff from Sherman Williams, I have a great relationship with the team there. And, uh, there should be no issue with any fading whatsoever.
Okay, great.
The maintenance fee that you have set up?
Yes, we were told that you typically want a ten percent holding fee, which we will probably have that and more in case something does need to be touched up in the future. So this will, again, this will be no cost to the library district, this will all be full funded with a maintenance fee reserved, just in case something needs to be done.
Um, what's the URL that the Q R code goes to?
Bill?
Daniel T. Griffin dot com.
Wait, the user, I'll check. Uh, what? If we're going to move forward with this dedication ceremony, the seventh. What does timing look like in front of approval from this board to get Kim enough time to do the work that needs to?
Kim, how long do you think it would take you to actually start to finish paint this?
Thirty days. Depending on the weather, of course.
Are you, do you have insurance in case you fall off like scaffolding or something?
He does, because he had to have that insurance to paint within the school district, in my honor, so, yes.
Anyone else? Thoughts?
Can you send us a sample of what that mural is going to be, uh, afterward, you had a topic that you can say?
I have, I have the PowerPoint.
Okay, yeah, if you could send that over, I'll, I'll show it. Thank you all for, uh, for being on here, and appreciate your work, kind of. Bring back, uh, we're just trying to keep it real, yeah, it's good.
It is awesome.
And I, I have a question for y'all, is there, is there a timeframe usually on your decision making something like this?
We will be discussing it, and I don't know if it'll be next month or the following month, but we'll make it a, a decision, I don't, I believe.
Uh, it, it really needs to go to the committee first.
Yeah.
Um, and they'll come back to the board.
Um, and they'll come back to the board as a whole with a recommendation. Um, and then based on that, whenever we get it on the agenda for the meeting, then that's when we would look at voting for it.
Would there be any value of us making ourselves available to the committee to answer any questions they might have?
Are we going, is this going to the public affairs?
So.
So I would suggest that, uh, if, if you have, or somebody has your contact information.
Yes.
We could probably just reach out to you.
Yeah.
If we need to.
I know that the artists in the Art Commission were very pleased with what Kim had proposed and shared, and I think that. There was a lot of very, much positivity yesterday by those leaders, which in the community, I suspect are. You know, probably a, a lot of the real thought leaders around, um, making sure things are appropriate. And so, I, I, Nancy, did you have anything else to add?
Uh, hi, Dave, uh, yeah, I think they asked great questions, uh, very much from a public art perspective and murals and, um. Uh, maintenance and, and those kinds of things, but, but there was absolutely, I think, a very strong, um. And very positive receptivity to this particular piece, given, uh, the military community, the downtown location, especially the tie to the Pike's Peak, uh. Library District, given that it was a library employee who, uh, really kind of brought this story back alive and. And what, uh, Dave didn't really, uh, speak to, but I learned about in the presentation with Mitchell High School was. That this, um, the coming alive of this story, uh, really actually had a tremendous impact on the family. Um, and the family coming together over, over years, uh. Uh, there's a bigger story here, I guess, and, uh, it certainly fits with the library, it was, it was well-supported, but also acknowledged that. Um, it is not, they came to the Public Art Commission really out of courtesy, uh, given that this is very much within the Library District's purview, so, yes, I guess that's what I would add.
Yeah, I, I, I would jump on that too with you, Nancy, and just share that, you know, over at, um, Dordi High School, one of the really. Wonderful things that we were able to do was to recognize the students there in the ROTC program who've done so much for my grandfather's grave since. This was rediscovered through Bill's work, uh, they put, uh. Reeds on the grave, they put flowers out on Memorial Day, and they've really taken a special interest in, in recognizing. Someone who for, for a large part of, of time was, was lost to Colorado Springs. Our family knew all about it in San Diego, but of course, you know, it's, it's a bit of a distance to kind of bridge the story, but once it did come together, we've really been able to. Engage and I think really bring it back to life, which is really exciting for me and fun for our family.
One, one last comment I will, um, make, actually, I remember, uh, Commissioner, um. Uh, Vandiverf was present at this meeting, and, uh, he, he made a comment about this being, um, having. The American flag downtown in Colorado Springs being, um, pretty, pretty big landmark potential, and, uh, with, with the love of the flag in this city. He, he was very positive, he in particular was very positive.
Well, we will, um, we'll talk about it at the Public Affairs Committee, which will be, uh, early in July. And then, um, I anticipate we would bring. More information to the board than at the July Board. So if, if I do have any questions, um, or our committee has questions, we'll reach out to you.
Thank you.
I, I think we're all here, so we're all seeing the, the presentation, so I, I don't think you need to, um. Hang out and wait for us to have questions, but, but we'll definitely reach out if we do.
Thank you guys for the time, uh, Greg. Big home run, buddy, you did a great job, thank you.
Good, thank you very much for your time, thank you for your service.
Excuse me. Uh. We are now at consent items, were there any questions over the minutes or anything that we need to discuss, or they're good to go? Hearing none, we'll move, uh, I need someone to, uh, move up to executive, uh, session.
Make a motion that the board enter executive session to discuss specialized details of security arrangements for investigations per CDS. Twenty-four dash six dash four oh two four D.
All, uh, all those in favor. I was about to ask, are there any questions? Yes, yes, but just a moment, uh, uh, all those in favor and taking this action, uh, signify by say a nine.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Hearing none, we'll go into executive session, all of you can.